I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This session of the Lincoln County Commission on December the 15th, 2011 at 10:00 a.m.
Let the record state that Thomas Roney is in the building.
Okay, first thing on the discussion concerned, we received a letter from Steve McComas concerning some dilapidated abandoned property, and Steve's not here, but it's Harold Albertson, Albertson. And it's property in Allen Creek, and I have tried to get a hold of these people, but I have not had success. However, they have sent letters, it says in April of 2009, that they were contacted of two houses in ill repair and possibly abandoned located in Allen Creek near the intersection of Childers Run and Canola River. And they attempted to send, they've sent a letter on August the 5th, 2011, and they still haven't received anything.
Is there any pictures or anything?
I don't have anything with this. He hasn't given me anything.
Well, I think probably the next meeting, agenda to vote on, but let me have a chance to find out a little more about it.
Next thing on the agenda is correspondence here from the Southwestern Regional Day Report Center. Looks like that our fees are going to go up in the year, fiscal year 2011 to 2012 will be fifty-nine thousand seventy-six dollars. That's an increase of about ten thousand dollars. And I just wanted to bring this to your attention.
Are you going to be in the March budget decision?
No, no, this is what's now, because we'll have to make a budget revision into this at line one. And we take it out and call Saturday. Yes, I did want to bring something to your attention, air tail fees have gone up to over fifty thousand dollars a month. This is the first time in 21 years that I've ever known it to be this high. See, we still, this is for the Day Report Center down here on Lynn Avenue, and we do pay all of the utilities and everything, and we bought the building, and we're still going to have to pay fifty-nine thousand.
I think the question I have is, how does it arrive at this? Is it on a, how many people it serves?
It's a grant, as you see it, and here it's talked about the grant, this is a matching grant.
But are we paying same as everybody else, or is it pro-rated based on?
I think we're paying everybody.
Well, I think we need to find out. And of course, if we're keeping the building up, we're going to have to pay some, it should be some adjustment. Maybe everybody else does the same. But we do need to pay it, but just find out a little bit before we mail the jet.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda, South Charleston and Lincoln PSD, Commissioner Roney, pick up on that.
Well, I know Mike Montzeller being here, and Gary McAllister's here, but along the corridor, yes, along the corridors, there is, I guess, a Department of Highways policy that you cannot run utilities. And to me, if you have a corridor in place, the whole purpose of that corridor, four lane, is to open those areas up to economic development. And I know the Lincoln PSD and the South Charleston City Council, with the help of their mayor, they've taken a step to ask that the Department of Highways look at that policy and change it so that sewer, water, other important infrastructure can be ran along the corridors. And this has an impact on Lincoln County because we would be able to deliver sewer service and probably water service to more people in the Allen Creek area than Lincoln County if we were able to run the infrastructure and the utilities along the corridor. So I would just like to see us join the efforts of those two other agencies.
Are you asking us to take a motion to, in the matters we follow up on?
Yes.
We've heard the request, is there a motion to support this request?
I will second.
Happy to join in.
I've had some discussions with some of the people in Charleston, as well as, you know, Kentucky. This is a state policy or whatever, it's not something that you necessarily do that. It's more of a hindrance, I think, to develop a place in Kentucky, once you cross over to Kentucky, you can build on those lines and things like that. So I think this just makes us competitive with everybody else. If it's not, if we're asking for something different than everybody else, we're just asking to be in the same situation that we go to for developing that area.
And it does make sense to put four lane highway through, the only one in the region, and not be able to have all the infrastructure.
I think this also goes with the land development, where you use the mines and stuff too, the more that we have here, those developed sites, when they have to reclaim them and things like that, horse park, things like that, I think it would make it a lot easier to do that, and even develop the way the structure of that.
Okay, on to old business, Ricky Dowell, let's each part of calling old business.
Did you catch that? I did not. She said you were old business.
Well, fortunately, not all my friends feel that way. I'd like to present to the Commissioner Ryan Jefferson, who, if you look on, if you go on a couple pages, the third page, the recommendation to employ Ryan as the assistant in the project starting December 12th, and there's a pay schedule that goes along with that. And along with that, there's also a copy of his resume on the next page. So Ryan's already started working, and is learning the ins and outs. I don't know whether you'd like him to say anything, or however you want to proceed.
I think this for public interest and the benefit of the commission here, it might be good just to quick synopsis, what he's wise here, and what he can do.
Sure. Why don't you show them who you are first, and then I'll explain what you're going to do.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Ryan Jefferson. I'm a recent graduate of Marshall University, and I'm looking forward to working with the Lincoln County Green Waste Water Project. I'd like to make a difference in rural communities within West Virginia, and I kind of started out with, with doing a little bit of that in affordable housing, and just looking forward to working on the project.
So he does bring some background from his work in McDowell County, in the septic systems. The hope is that when we move to a possible Phase Five, we haven't gotten to Phase Four yet, but when we move to a possible Phase Five, that Ryan would take over the leadership for the project for that. And so currently, you know, he's here full-time, just trying to learn all the ropes.
And his pay is coming out of the grant?
Yes, yes, his pay will come out of the grant, the pay for all the people working on the project. And it's obvious, I mean, he hasn't, he hasn't come in exhausted yet, but I know there's all sorts of stuff he's trying to endure, because it seems like we're getting, instead of getting less complicated, we're getting more complicated.
And he follows you around, you're walking the net.
So I'd bring you a recommendation that we go ahead and employ him on a probationary status for the first 90 days, and then after that, I'll come back.
There are notes on here, it's just underneath.
And it is December the 2nd?
Yes.
Motion's in going, so move. Oh, yes, motion carries. Welcome, Ryan.
Thanks, guys.
Let me go over a couple things that we've been working on. Of course, we're working on, we're moving toward Phase Four, I'll talk about that in a second. The other thing that we're trying to do, you know, we've talked about these concrete tanks that we put in originally in Phase One, and then we stopped putting them in because we found that we had problems with them. We've decided that we really need to go back and evaluate those tanks, and we're doing that in a number of ways. The easiest, I think this is the easiest, I'm not sure, is to actually open the lids of these tanks and get down inside with a camera and try to take a variety of pictures, especially if it's raining, and if it's raining, what you can see is you can actually see water coming in through cracks and stuff, groundwater coming into the tanks. So we're doing that. We were also trying to do some dye tests, where we put dye on the outside of the tanks during rainy season, and then if the tanks turn, the inside turns color, again, we know that there's some leakage going on. We're going to try to do all of the ones, or almost all of the ones that went in during Phase One, to see if there are certain manufacturers that seem to leak more than other manufacturers. And my hope would be, we have this finished by the end of January, and in February, at the February meeting, I bring you a recommendation on what we might do. I guess, the thought is that we find that one manufacturer is head and shoulders above the others for bad leaking tanks, that we could try to get a meeting with that person and see if we could reach some sort of compensation.
Probably started with the?
Yes, we did. And in the, and the county commission in the end said that we could not use that person's concrete tanks, and then later on, the project said no concrete tanks at all. So we haven't had any concrete tanks go in since, I think, 2015. But we've got those ones for that, and the fear is that some of those are not working on. So we are working on that. At the same time we're doing that, if you look on page two, we're working on Phase Four. We are hoping, there's a chart there, we're hoping that we can put in more in-ground systems in Phase Two and Phase Three. All the systems we put in were direct discharge, so that effluent, that meant the effluent went back into the creek. It ends up happening that way because the state is really strict about what you can put back in the ground, and if the water table's too high, or if you don't have a perk rate, or if it's too close to the creek, they say it's better to put it in the creek than go into the ground. We're working really hard to get some in-ground. At this point, there's a possibility that we might have five systems that would be in-ground systems. But we're going around and doing dye tests, and doing observation holes, and doing perk tests, and those are things that even with two heads, we still don't have enough experience to do correctly, so we're pulling in some folks from the state PHHR to help us with those. Hopefully, we'll get that decided by the first part of January, and we would move toward having a finalized list of how many systems and what kind of technology we would actually put in. Once that's done, we can go to the DEP with a tentative budget, get their approval, and we'll put this out. Sort of where we are in the procedure. Again, it always seems to take us longer than we thought, but we're moving forward on that.
How hard is it to make, like, into Phase Four, and put these people in, just have us a little map to sort of show what creeks are on there, because I get lost sometimes for where we're at.
We could bring you a map of the whole thing, or for sure, we could bring you a map of Phase Four?
Right, well, eventually, I think we'll want to map the whole thing, showing, you know, probably when you get to the Level 10 or something. I just think we, just have to see what we're working on.
Does it have some heavy vitamins that go with it for Level 10 to keep us moving?
Yeah.
Yeah, we will get you a map.
What is that? Yeah, this is to get your reports and just kind of like?
There's also a staple page which just gives you an update on the both the direct discharge samples and the tributary samples. We sample the effluent that comes out of these systems, because it's supposed to be at a certain positive level of E. coli. Often, if we find a high level, we then start looking more carefully at the system itself. And usually, what we find is, if we've got, you know, a reading that's in the thousands, it means that there's something wrong with the system. And so it's been helpful to do these samples because it lets us head off big problems earlier on. We decided it would be easier to break them up by phases, so you've got systems that were sampled in, that were in Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three. And generally, you'll see that most of the samples were both positive. Those that are not, we've either been able to solve, or we're still able to solve. And then the last thing you've got is the tributary sampling. We also have 11 spots in the watershed where we take the water samples right out of the creeks, and we measure them to see how many E. coli colonies are in those, and hopefully to see trends that are showing the water quality, and the whole watershed is getting better and better.
I know some of that water check funds were in Clay, you know, the high sample.
Yes, exactly.
And that shows you the other quarter.
Right, well, what we did, we just did a sam, we just did a sampling, was it this week? Yeah, it was this Tuesday. And instead of sampling there at that usual spot at Clay's, we went upstream just a little because we thought, you know, it's going to be another bad sample and try to get that system fixed. So, yeah, appreciate you looking at seeing those things. The other thing I've got, which is not related to the water sample, but ties into some of the health things, on the 20th, this Tuesday, a group of concerned people in the county, educators, people who are working with different agencies, will be presenting up an idea for a pilot project at the high school for pregnant teens and parents and teens. And it will be a one day a month for each of those groups. And we bring in a variety of presenters that we would give them information, provide them services with the idea that that group of teenagers, by doing this, would help them be more successful as parents, but we'd also help them stay in school, you know, they wouldn't drop out. So the last page there are modules, potential modules that we'll be using in the pilot, and organizations that have a deal to do that. The good thing about it is that all of these are going to be done for free, it's not going to cost the board anything.
These are students who are in school?
These are students who are in school. Students who are in school that either aren't pregnant, their father's too, you know, they won't be involved, and students who are in school that have already had their babies. So we'll have two different groups, we'll have the pregnant group, and then we'll have the group that aren't parents. So we'll see what happens. The hope is, we've been working with the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, they've been coming to meetings as we plan these out. They've already let the board know that this is going to happen on Tuesday, so the hope is that this will be approved, and then we'll roll this pilot out, do some evaluations, see what happens. That's the hope, that we show how successful this is, and get buy-in from the board and the community, and there'll be other pilots.
Well, you know, anything, you need, if you need anything from us, and something, I guess, just come back and ask, I mean, it's definitely something else.
Yeah, I mean, if we actually did this as a full-time class or something, there might be costs involved, and I'm not sure.
And are these kids, are people that ride on their transportation or by school buses?
At this point, they ride the school buses. Tri-River Transit is, I think, they were going to get approval from their board. They felt that they could, when we, one of the ideas is that the mothers who've already delivered, that we would provide Tri-River Transit to pick them and their young children up, age one and under, and Tri-River would transport those people. Because the school system doesn't have buses that have cars and those kind of things. It's all been interesting, but, you know, we certainly may come back. One of the big long-term ideas, when the high school was built, there was a plan to have a daycare center there, and that was another one of these things, they ran out of room, just as what's happening down at Hart's. Dwight Covern at Southwestern is willing to work with the school system, and I think this pilot will derive this, to look at ways to build a daycare center there as to provide services for mothers with babies and younger children, even more to help to keep these kids.
Thank you, it's nice to meet all of you, thank you again.
Next thing on the agenda is Hart's Community Center. I know that you attended a few things, that they're rocking a call and said that they were having problems with the roof leaking again.
They showed me at the other night.
And we needed some observation to get some things done up there.
Well, I think you're authorized you to work with, and if it's definitely leaking, you show me it, it doesn't matter, it's a crime there. And also, there's a sewer problem.
Yes, a bad sewer problem, which I have talked to both the South, the senior center, you know, the senior center, and I've talked to Rocky up there as well, and I don't know what, where everything's coming from, but I've made both entities aware of it.
Want us to do some dye tests?
Excuse me?
Why don't you think about, I mean, there might be some ways we could?
We'll mention that to them, because they're trying to figure out what, they're going to have a game plan, they've got a problem, no game plan.
Richmore and Associates are the ones who are, take care of the system up there, and they're the ones who advise us on what's going on.
Above ground plants, like that.
Same, probably the same.
Probably, I don't really know. The LCOC got permission to hook into it because they were having problems with their in-ground, and so.
The Corporal Community Center, do we want to get an update from Ms. Shager?
Well, and I first, I want to, before I forget, I want to thank Doris, her resignation, and I do want to thank you for serving and being a member, and having the headaches that go with it, and all those things, but we do have it on here later to act on, but I just thought, had that, I'd say thank you, appreciate you serving, helping out, and being aggravated for whatever, you know how it is, and helping people.
Well, Scott and I both felt that the time was right, our year was up, and on the big and bad things as well, like that, and like I had said in my letter, I still want to have some kind of involvement in the community, maybe something more open up after the first year, but we did what we could with what we had for it.
There's not enough room there to do what really needs to be done, that was one of the things that I seen when we had it.
Well, you've got the outreach center in there, and you also had a crime watch, and that way, those two things, like they're, they've got ninety percent of it.
And you still got a little bit of Southwestern in there.
Right.
But anyway, yeah, and when we get down to that, I do have some other comments, I just want to say thank you. Sharon?
Thank you for finding that outreach, donations are coming in, and thank the people who've delivered the mess. We'll leave you to judge.
Did you get? What about the shoebox thing, have we got that?
We got them, and we've been giving them out since right, thank you.
I think, will they come and pick them up from the Hart's area?
Not yet.
And this next item, I want to speak to, on the?
We are, we are having a dinner, Christmas dinner, this Saturday at three o'clock, at the Corporal Community Center also.
This is like, thank you dinner for the community, or is this a fundraiser?
For the community, I'm sure.
Right, I appreciate it. On this next item, I did want to speak to, Sharon had requested that if we could, if not, she just continued to do the best she could, but if we could help her some way, and I really went, I've been working on this for two months, and went to Southwestern and trying to see if they had any funds where they might be able to do something to help, and haven't been able to find anything out yet, doesn't mean it's canned, but we're trying to work on that, and one of the things that Mr. Covern said he was willing to do was work with us and try to find a solution, so we're still trying it. But in the meantime, what I put on the agenda here to enter into contract with Sharon, coordinate and work with the outreach, and of course, they already helped maintain the building and help do that kind of stuff, just something to keep them from going in a hole so deep. Suggesting that we consider giving her a contract for $200 a month, just to help her with expenses and things, to help maintain the outreach, but certainly doing it aggressively. So if you want to write that in, consider a motion, $200 per month.
I will move to agree to have a contract with Sharon for $200 per month.
And this won't be, you know, lifetime, but it'll be until we can figure something out. Yeah, we'll do it again probably at the end of this fiscal year, beginning Thursday or something, one of those other places. The motion's second, oh, yes, motion carries.
This next item is something that can range to Australia, and they went to help them or had any kind of service for non-county residents, that they could charge their insurance company for the services. And I went farther than that because I know West Ham's at Hart's and just put that any volunteer fire department could do this.
Authorizing station.
Mm-hmm. So with that, I need a motion to adopt the proposed rate for the fire department's billing to the insurance company for non-county residents for services of the volunteer fire department.
I will move, and also just to make it clear, individuals already pay in their premium an amount that goes toward fire departments, so this was already billed into people's insurance. So in Lincoln County, we're one of the few counties that I've talked to fire officials from, we don't currently have something like this. The other counties are already, the fire departments having someone bill the insurance so that they can help to establish some funding for the local fire departments, and it will not impact Lincoln County residents at all.
So the insurance company said, well, Rachel, being with the COVID, this is not true.
And it shouldn't impact any of the individuals.
Do the fire departments have separate billing services?
The motion's second. You know, yes, vote, motion carries.
Okay, on to new business, I need a motion to approve the business submitted for planning.
Second, motion's second, you know, yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the appointments, welcome settlements is submitted by Donald C. Little Clark.
So move second. Motion second, all yes, motion carries. Lots of Donald.
Well, we have a met for, huh? To approve the exoneration orders as submitted by Tracy Dempsey Assessor.
Motion second, all of us, motion carries.
I need a motion to appoint Edwin Cartwright to the Lincoln County Economic Development Authority.
I will move, and also just to make it clear, individuals already pay in their premium an amount that goes toward fire departments, so this was already billed into people's insurance. So in Lincoln County, we're one of the few counties that I've talked to fire officials from, we don't currently have something like this. The other counties are already, the fire departments having someone bill the insurance so that they can help to establish some funding for the local fire departments, and it will not impact Lincoln County residents at all.
So the insurance company said, well, Rachel, be the code.
This is not true. And it shouldn't impact any of the individuals.
Fire departments have separate billing services. I'll second the motion.
The motion's second. Again, all yes votes, motion carries.
Okay, on to new business. I need a motion to approve the bills submitted for plan.
Second. The motion's second. Again, all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the appointments, welcome settlements, submitted by Donald Seawill's clerk.
So move second. Motion second. All yes, motion carries. Lots of.
Well, we have a met for, huh? To approve the exoneration orders as submitted by Tracy Dempsey Assessor.
Motion second. All of us, motion carries.
I need a motion to appoint Evelyn Cartwright to the Lincoln County Economic Development Authority Board of Directors.
Before I make the motion, I would like to say that in our last EDA meeting, I know Gary McAllister's on the board with me, we talked about trying to find someone that we knew was a committed Lincoln County volunteer, and particularly a female, because currently we have no females on the board, and Evelyn's name continually came up. We know that you're busy, but we also know that if it hadn't been for the work you've done, Evelyn, at the Parks and Rec Board and the quilt trail that we see across Lincoln County would be a reality, so I will move on that motion.
I'll second that. Motion second. All yes, and I even appreciate it. She works herself today, and I'm afraid we're gonna, yeah, I know, you gotta get a helper. He's retired now a little bit, too. Well, where's your time?
He made me retire from his employment.
And I should say that we still want more females than Evelyn. It's so, happening, happening to be setting the side of our next choice.
I ain't saying it looks like you're stupid back there. Be a good business rep, wouldn't it?
I need a motion to appoint Rodney Dow as a representative on the Region Two Workforce Board of Directors as a representative for Lincoln County.
Second. Motion second. All yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to set a hearing date of January the 5th, 2011, at 6:00 p.m. on the contest of the wheel of St. Anne Evans, as requested by Lori Evans.
So move second. Motion second. All yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve a contract buying between the West Virginia Development Office and the Lincoln County Commission for the Tri-River Transit Authority for matching funds for a federal grant.
So move second. Motion second. All yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve a contract buying between the West Virginia Development Office and the Lincoln County Commission for the Lincoln County Parks and Recreation, an amount of $6,000 to purchase exercise equipment.
So move.
I'll second. We want to use this.
It says in the Hart's area on the contract. It says, "To enable the Lincoln County Parks and Recreation Commission to improve the Hart's High School community building. The project will include the purchase of exercise equipment, the development of a walking trail, and other improvements and funds for it."
Now, is that going to be at the Furlsburg or the Hart's?
It said Hart's High Community, so I don't know.
We'll just have to find out who got the money.
I think it's our project for the exercise as a whole. I think it's the Hart's building, I think they want to transfer it.
Well, that's what my question was, is what we had talked about.
Just the mill or the exercise.
Didn't know what. Still, still in the area.
I've had some people from Alcoa ask if we could help them to establish an exercise room with Morrisville Fire Department, so that's something we could think about, see if there's any space for it.
Back there, back there's a lady to talk to.
Okay, the motion's second, again, all yes votes. Motion carries.
I need a motion. Yes, we do need to give authorization to Charles S. McCain President, authorization to sign the stated contracts.
I will move to amend my motion to include that statement.
That'll be on both of them.
All yes, vote.
I need a motion to appoint Jerry Bowman Sheriff as administrator of the estate of Lois Ferguson, as requested by Judge Scott Elswich, order of the family court.
Second.
Motion second. All yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve a donation to the Lincoln EMS, an amount of $500 to purchase winter coats for needy children.
So move second. Motion second.
I need a motion to approve a donation to the Hart's Crime Watch, an amount of $133.88 for a Christmas dinner at the Hart's Community Center on December the 12th, 2011.
Second.
Motion second. All yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to accept a reservation from Scott Foley and Doris Sharp as members of Board of Directors for the McCorkle Community Center.
I will make the motion, but I will echo the statements from President McCain, that appreciate the service that you and Scott have provided, and that you worked hard, and you guys did everything you could to make the center a success. Appreciate it.
Relate with the experience.
I'll second.
Motion second. And before I do call for a vote on, I will suggest, we don't have to decide today, but suggest that the commission, think about between now and the next meeting, January the 5th, that at McCorkle, due to the constraints and the confusion and whatever that's existed there, it's been a, not a smooth road, and I think, just like I said, well, it's a too smaller building for such great needs out there, and such people wanting to do so much. But rather than getting back to pointing at the board, replace these two, that maybe at the first year, we consider just having advisory board, leaving those three on there as advisory, people say, here's what we might want in our community, but really not call, putting them in a position to be in conflict with outreach or with crime lots and those kind of things. So just be a thing about how we might do it before we do anything else. There'll be an all yes vote, motion carries.
I need a motion to set the petition to move a curb on Route 10 in Hart's, across the road from the new school in Hart's, and submit the petition to the West Virginia Department.
Second.
The motion's second. How many signatures do we have?
I don't know, there's a whole pile of them.
Seven.
Okay, all yes votes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the employment of Matthew Miller, as law enforcement officer, effective December the 1st, 2011, with an annual salary of $23,000, as requested by Jerry Bowman Sheriff.
So move second.
The motion's second. All yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the appointment of Matthew Breedlove, as law enforcement officer, effective December the 1st, 2011, with an annual salary of $23,000, as requested by Jerry Bowman Sheriff.
Second, motion's second. All yes, motion carries.
These are all for those.
I need a motion to approve the appointment of Cindy Vance, as your main officer, litter control processor, effective December the 16th, 2011, with an annual salary of $19,200, as requested by Jerry Bowman Sheriff.
So move, and welcome back. Motion second. All yes, motion carries. Cindy was, was there, and now she's not.
I need a motion to reappoint Alfred Abshire to the Franchilla Minkin Public Service Board of Directors, term being January 1st, 2012, December 31st, 2017.
So move. Second. Motion second. All yes, motion carries.
That's that Christmas present, isn't it?
I need a motion to approve a donation to the Ranger Elementary, in the amount of $1,000 for the book fair and an incentive program.
So move.
Second. Motion second. All yes, motion carries.
Is there anyone in the audience that's not on the agenda that would like to speak at this time?
Yes. I called last week to ask to be appointed the county coroner. Right now, the position is a Wayne, county, Lincoln County thing, and I think it should belong to Lincoln County only, we should not have to rely on another county to do it. It helps EMS, law enforcement, and funeral directors, having somebody close by, and it just makes sense to have Lincoln County as an independent entity.
What is your name?
Dennis Mansfield.
Dennis?
Mansfield.
Do you have any experience with that?
Yes. I'm a medical examiner now. I've been paramedic for five years, so I have medical experience. I weren't, I work under the office of the chief of medical examiner now.
Okay, we'll take that if you're fine, then. If you have some type of resume or something you must get to duty that we'd like to have in the future.
Anyone? Anyone else in the audience that's not on the agenda that would like to speak? Where's Christie? She's supposed to be here.
She was there a second ago.
Part of my report will involve Lincoln DSD, but I think maybe Mike just might, him and Gary together, might say something about where are we at on the Woodville-Alcoa? I know I've seen an email come through.
We have all the applications in place. We're doing along very well, the bottom line is money. Everything that we can do, we've done. We're just waiting on the different lenders to get us there.
Gary, you ready?
Just like we says, we're meeting all of our, all of the targets that we have to apply for giants and wonders.
One of the things in my report, I was, had to capsule this week, and on the Hart's projects, so Mr. rang in, and some of the engineers up there was talking about this project, to deal with that, and Mr. Watson particularly, and he was telling me, of course, I didn't understand the time, and after I read the report last night, it seems like it, that's a $6.8 million project, and we're short at least a million or maybe more. And what I'm gonna ask the commission to do here in a minute is that we, in this project, we remember out of the Hobet settlement, that there was like $4 million, something like that, if I remember right, and they set aside 1.2 for the Mud River Valley part of that drainage system, to get water there, and I just think it would be, the right thing for us to do is to formally request DEP to provide, they've got the 1 million set aside that we asked them to set aside, and they always think, well, maybe they don't ask enough, but at least a million dollars or more out of that settlement. I know part of it's supposed to be for other public issues, but, but they haven't spent that money, I don't believe it, according to Mr. Watson. So maybe that would help, and at the same time, maybe ask Hobet as the company in that area, that if they would be willing to put additional money into that. But we've got to get this project done, and it seemed to me like now's the time to do it. We don't need to wait any longer. We need to see, do everything we can to get every piece of money we can to make it happen. So I think what I'd like to propose, I guess at this, I was going to do it in the commission concern, this would be as good as any that, that we, on behalf of the Lincoln County Commission, we send letters to Randy Huffman at DEP requesting additional money, so if you think a million or whatever we need to ask for, we could ask for two, it doesn't make any difference, so. So they've got three more million to spend or something like that, I understand. And, and also that we send a letter to Hobet, because on the mud, on the going on there, so, due to the coal mining, and I certainly support the coal mining, and we certainly benefit from the severance money that comes in, but if they can help us, they will, I'm sure, but we just need to ask. So do I have a motion, all that rambling?
I'll second that.
The motion's second. Anybody want to speak to that?
I just think that it's really an emergency situation, considering that so much of the funding is tied to what's going on in Washington, and with the turmoil, and the partisan body back and forth, I don't think it's going to get any better, and that if we don't seize on the moment now and try to make this happen for the people in the Alcoa area, it could be shorthanded.
You know, and could we also send, I know a long time ago, we sent a request to the gas people to ask them if they can help, you know, or if we might include that.
Find out who's in that area.
Yeah.
I think Chesapeake is one of the names, I'm not sure.
Because any of those that are, you know, industrial partners for something, we should, we should, I think, contact, at least ask them if they can help us in any way.
Will hurt, for sure. And, you know, maybe it might help the PSD, if it's not coming from us, it might help them a little bit, so. So we have a motion second, again, all yes votes, motion carries.
I know, we're gonna get some questions from folks in the leadership of the board working, this would include the alcohol squirrel on the line, right? This would take care of that?
Yes, it, it's the Woodville, alcohol, Bulger Road, Mud River Valley.
And is it just Bulger at this point? Is it gone?
It doesn't go with the branches as well.
Dogbone and all those.
We have signed, we have awarded the contract with a small extension toward alcohol from Route 30, that will go probably to the top of the hill.
That's the money. We have to over money.
The signed contract has been signed, and the bid pads are being going over by the engineer right now. So hopefully, there's a start, instructions on that in a matter of.
I don't, I remember we was gonna do that, or you guys were gonna do it. It replaces some of the old one?
That's correct.
And does it add any new hookups?
Yes.
So maybe we could gather your office and just get the most current map, so that when people say to us, what's happening, we could say, here's what we know at this point.
That'd be good, that's okay.
Plus, you know, when you get water in there, you want to see how good your systems are.
Exactly.
Make a big difference in your system.
Yes.
Big difference.
I mean, it should take care of all these questions we had about mineral content, I mean, at least will take care of that.
Because the formation itself will help, will help, you see.
Christie. I just want to give an update about where we're at, with going door to door. We still have a couple areas, we have a little bit of Nine Mile left. FAS was in that phase, too, that we had approved. I stopped FAS for right now until we figure out where we'll be voting exactly, that way whenever they go out, they can notify the people there of that, too. I spoke to a gentleman that is a deacon at the church that's there nearby, and he's going to check with them about maybe even that being a polling place, so once he gets back with us, then I'm going to go out and visit all three, and see which would be the best place to, you know, to put FAS. So we held off on the FAS area for right now. They have finished up all of the West Hamlin area, different parts like that. I spoke to Jo Von yesterday, and she's getting all of our paperwork and our maps together and everything, that way she can send all that to us, so we'll have it. So now I'm here to request that we go ahead and hit the rest of the county.
Do you have a feel now, since you've done this much, how far that is? How much money, how much done?
Well, the exact money, I think they told me a while ago, was like $14,000, I think is where we're at. And that was everything, that's letters, that was mailed out, that was, you know, all that stuff like that. I know just in the cards, the registration cards that's came back, there's been a couple hundred of those, that I have got to update addresses, and these are people that we've been getting returns back from all this time. There's actually a girl that is working in Donald's office, that's taking everyone's notes when they come in, and putting them on a master copy, so I've still got to get in there and start working on those. And there's tons of updated addresses that we've done, we've even had some new registrations. We was even able to remove some people, like when I went out to the home, it was, you know, my husband's been passed, and he was on the books, so, things like that. So, I mean, we've got to clean up the voting.
Probably talking about, probably another month of work to cover the counties, reach people?
Yeah, I, I would say they should go work the rest of that out in a month. We have Midway, McCorkle, Mud River, Hamlin, and Hart's.
Well, if you get it done, we're in, it seems to be the right thing to do, so we'll just have to look at our budget, see where we can move money, because we certainly run it out in Donald's office, but we'll just have to do that. Do you have a motion to?
I have a couple questions.
Do that?
I guess just for the public's benefit, as people are out going door to door, and they're delivering the, getting the correct addresses, new registration, the animation we need, that information, then we'll pass it on the 911, so they can put that in their system.
Yes.
So this is a dual purpose for us, to make sure that it's a public safety issue, and also updating the voter record.
They're putting that on the one master copy, and then I'll just make a copy of that, and 911 will get that also. Because the 911, when they gave us our papers, a lot of, they had addresses, no names, things like that, so that'll help them. Plus, they've also been noting different things. We did, we have had a couple instances where people were really irate that someone was there, you know, things like that, so they noted that, the way 911 will know if they send out an ambulance or whatever, they know what they're going to come up against, you know, if there's a dog that's trying to attack, or somebody's trying to run over, you know, tried to run over the people who came to the house, or threatened them, they'll know that before they go, so they'll, that's going to help them, too.
Do they need special labs or anything like that?
No.
I know that at the last meeting, we talked about FAS precinct, and how there was problems, and I think that based on that meeting, a lot of rumors have gotten out of the FAS area, that that means that. area, that that means that the precinct for that entire area is gonna be closed, and those people will have to then vote at Duval or somewhere else. So just wanna make sure it's clear that FAS will remain in that precinct, we just have to find a new voting location.
Right.
Because I know you've gotten feedback as well.
Yeah, yeah, people have called, and said they had to go, you know, all the way to Ranger, or things like that, I told them that, you know, they're still gonna be voting at FAS, we just don't know where yet.
And I heard you speak a while ago about Jo Von, when she comes, is she coming down, or is she just gonna handle, get the work done for you? When I was in Charleston last week on this water project for this week, it seemed like last week, I had some time, so I went downstairs to talk to Jo Von, went in her office, and waited my turn, and got to talk with her, and one of the things that, you know, still bothers me was how to deal with the precincts, and as they fit into these census blocks. And she's talked like that, that we probably needed to talk through that, and I said, well, you need to probably talk through Kristy. And so she did tell me she'd try to do that, so we just need to probably, if we can get her down here someday, for a couple hours, and just look what situations we've got, and see if we can make sure we're resolving properly, because, you know, elections are coming soon.
Yeah, well, yesterday she had asked for the contact person at 911, to be able to get all of their county road names, things like that.
She didn't really like them or do all of them.
Yeah, getting all, she wanted to get all that, the way she would know, all the roads, and then we can look at, where's this road located, you know, do we need to, see if we can try to move, will the census block let us move, you know, just to adjust people where they're voting, just voting for voting purposes. Because we don't want people, you know, having to drive miles, you know, just to vote.
Well, she said you shouldn't make it inconvenient, try to make it convenient.
Last thing before I be willing to vote is, and I know you have done the best you can do to relay this to the people that's out going door to door, but some people have given feedback that they've been home, and they've received a letter in their newspaper box, or stuck in their fence, it wasn't in their door, and they knew that no one knocked on their door. So I think it needs to be very clear to the workers that this is a very important, expensive venture, and that they are to go to every single door, because one of the purposes is not only to let them know that there's changes being made, but for us to update the addresses. And so, and I know you will, because you're frustrated at some of those accusations as well, if it's found out that they're not following through and doing the job thoroughly, that they know longer what they want to hear from you.
But not to put themselves at risk, you know, for dogs that are.
Right. Well, that's why I was explaining to them, they need to note that, you know, we need to know why they didn't see that person, or if that person wasn't home, it needs to say in the paperwork, try, you know, try knocking on the door, don't want answered, you know, I left a note. I don't want them just going out and leaving the notes, because we need to talk to these people. I need their full names too, some of them had just wrote last name, but that's not, if I enter Atkins, I'm, I've got probably a hundred sheets gonna pop up on there and try to figure.
You see, does everyone vote in their district? You know, we have these three districts, are we voting in the district we're living in, or does any of us, you put in other districts or anything like that?
No, you would vote in the district that you live in.
Okay.
Yeah.
So like, so like in my situation, where the districts change, the boundaries have changed, I guess, do I still go to Ranger and vote, or I mean, I mean, or should I go to Ranger?
Yeah, you should be at Ranger.
Okay, okay, I see. Because I was concerned, it was brought up to me before by someone, that if you were voting out of district, you couldn't vote for your community person that would represent your district or whatever, and it lost my attention, I wouldn't make sure that, that we were all voting in our district.
Yeah. The only thing that might, she might have to tweak a little bit, is you're still gonna be in your district, but one precinct might be closer to you than the, you know what I mean, so she might have to move that census block a little bit, because we don't want people, wanna use it big ugly, you know, having to drive up over the hill all the way down into Harts, just because of the census block, you know, so she's gonna work on things like that.
Yeah, because I just wanna make sure that, you know, because we need to get to the Board of Education, racial community races, those are important.
Yes.
Actually, it's illegal to go out of your precinct, and out of your district, isn't it?
Yeah, oh yeah. And I think that, I think a lot of people will take advantage of early voting too, especially if it's in other areas of the county. Some people are nervous about that many people being in a precinct, are there gonna be long lines, things like that, I've been trying to explain to them when they call in, it's, you're not gonna walk in and have the two machines that you normally have, there will be more machines, I think they think, you know, there's just gonna be two machines, and I'm gonna be in a big line, and, but it's not, you know, there'll be several machines there.
Following up on what Commissioner Vance just asked, have we had anyone visit his area yet? I mean.
No.
Okay, so is it an area that has not been visited yet, or have they just missed its house?
They haven't made it there yet.
Okay.
There's like four or five houses.
And what I, yeah, and what I tried to do was to get people that lives in that area to visit that area, that way they would know that area. So like, we have two people that lives on Nine, what I call Nine Mile, that will be doing Nine Mile. I tried to do that, because they know more of the people, people more comfortable than it would be if I would show up at a house at Duval, they'd feel more comfortable if they knew someone, you know, in that Duval area. So we've been trying to hire people in those areas, because they know, because I don't know all the road names, you know, and they'll call and give me a road name, and I wouldn't know that, but they know the area.
And based, I said earlier that there's been some complaints, the vast majority of comments that's came back to me, and I'm sure with the others, have been positive. People are very happy, and they appreciate the outreach that we've given.
And especially a lot of elderly people have called in, and have thanked us, because just came that letter, and them trying to read that letter, you know, someone that's a little bit confusing, and someone actually come in there, talking to them. The only problem is, they want you to come and hang out for a while, and so, I've been trying to tell them, you know, sort of try to move on, you know, don't be mean, but, you know, I know some of them, they've, they've tried to get them to come in and eat with, and come, you know, things like that, so, some likes to talk, they don't have no one there, and they, so I just told them, give them my number, and I'll, I'll talk to them, you know, for them to keep moving.
Another discussion before we ask for a motion to, I just jotted down, since we authorized further work in this process, and to appropriate additional funds to Donald's budget.
So.
I'll say it. The motion is second, all yes, motion carries. We do appreciate your work, you're done, Kristy.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that's not on the agenda, wants to speak at this time? Okay, we'll go to the commission concerns. Commissioner Vance?
I just have a couple things. I, I wanted to take time to thank Mr. Abshire there. I know that he and I have been dealing with, and as the other commissioners have, with this project for quite a while, and I don't think that we've gotten through if we didn't have people like us, to take care of those, and help the ways out there. We talked to people on Ten Mile, they really identified with him more than anyone else, so, and that can be good if things are going good, and it can be bad if things are going bad, so, and I know he's had several years of things not being so great to talk to people up there. But I do think that persistence is the key to these type things, and keeping a level head, as you're trying to tell people, because a lot of people don't understand the process, and how long that process takes, and they get concerned, they get worried, that this is happening, or that's happening, but I do think the, one of the rocks in that process is gonna be Mr. Abshire, so I wanted to thank him for that. The other thing I wanted to bring up was, I know the commission has, in the past, we've been trying to get these cell towers, and get people to put service onto our towers, and things of that nature, and I don't know that we have anything new on that, I know I've been talking about, and I know the other commissioners have, but, and I don't really need a motion or anything to do this, I don't think, but I would like to, to initiate some conversations with some people that I've kinda gotten pointed towards, as far as this might be, and if it would be the commission, the commission's wish, I will contact those people, and have them get in touch with you, Mr. McInnes, or whatever.
The meeting?
Yeah, because I really think we need a solid attempt, I know we all, every time, saying we need cell service, but I think we need to get names, and, and, and who's responsible in these different companies that we can address as a commission, and as a people, and say, look, this is a matter of public safety in the county, that we don't have cell service in these areas, where people may have accidents, or may be sick and can't get a hold of people. We've talked before about the lines being down, the landlines being down, things of that nature, but I think it's time that we jump our priority up on this, and try our best to put, I won't say put pressure on, but this is a good time to be doing this prior to an election, as we all know, you can usually get things done a little bit better then, so, and that's, that's good and bad in a way, but I would like, if it's okay with the commission, go ahead and initiate some conversations with some of the names that I've been made aware of, and then have them get back in touch with us about those type of things.
That's cool, Steve, I hear you.
Thank you. That's all.
Commissioner Rangin?
The last item that we voted on was a donation to Ranger Elementary School for $1,000. So just to follow up on that, I had been working with Lucy Brock, who was a school teacher there at Ranger, and they have a program at the school, STAR program, that helps to help bring kids up to par when it comes to reading, and also be more responsible in everyday student life. They, students, they are able to get $1, which is a Ranger dollar per day, and the school has a store set up, so that the kids have the incentive, if they're good, they learn to read, they really try, and they're responsible, they get the dollar, and after so many weeks, they can go to the store, and they can spend the dollar to buy books or whatever else is there. So the $1,000 that we donated would go into buying products for that store. We had also received a request from Connie Webb, who is the parent coordinator, and Connie wanted to purchase four or five Kindles, to be able to hand out to five different students. And the $1,000 that we gave will go to Ranger, though, to go to Lucy's program. Connie, which Christine and after the principal is going to talk to her, let her know, Connie's Kindles we purchased through funds that the school already has, so just wanted to make that clear. On December 5th, I attended a meeting with the Lincoln County School Superintendent Patricia Lucas. The meeting was really a brainstorming session, in order to come up with plans to deal with the soon vacant buildings in the Harts area. At the meeting was also Commission President McInnes and Assistant Tracy Bemser. It was the desire of everyone in the meeting for us to find a way to utilize the facility upon some entity that could utilize the facility, so the businesses are not recovering. Also, we expressed to the superintendent that many people in the Harts area are really wanting to see the gymnasium at the old high school used for community service, it's a large facility, and we hate to see the gym doing waste. On the 7th, I attended the Lincoln EDA Bacon Eggs and Business Breakfast at Skeeter's Restaurant in Harton. The topic of that breakfast was the Hackfield-McQuay Trail System, and we were lucky enough to have Jeff Lusk, the director of Hackfield-McQuay, as the guest speaker, and those in attendance, the Lincoln Journal's owners, Tom and Patty Robinson, most of the business owners in the Harts area, EDA members, and others from across the county. And it was a very positive meeting, because, as we know, anytime we talk about Hackfield-McQuay in different areas, we do have some people that's not as supportive, and at this particular meeting, after Jeff Lusk gave an informative overview of the plans, the timeframe, many questions were directed to him about the system, but none were directed in a negative, facetious manner, they were directed in a manner that they could learn and get their concerns and their questions answered. So I was really happy about the way the meeting was handled, and I think it was a real positive meeting. There seems to be an underlying belief in the Harts area, that besides natural resources, tourism is the next best chance at having a sustainable economy locally. Also, on December the 7th, myself, along with the Commission President and several others, were able to go to the new school at Harts and take a tour, it was my first time being in the school, and having served on the school board, and going to the school building authority, and watching the initial process, and now seeing the building, building in reality, and just, it was a great day to be able to walk in the building. And being there, though, did point out some problems that we have. We have just over 70 parking places for just under 60, just under 70 employees, so we have four or five parking places that's gonna be free during the school day. I think that problem's been resolved, based on communication I've had with the school board's office and the principal, though, that they're going to go in, and they're gonna gravel in some of the areas, so people will have places to park. Concerned about playground, I know that in the planning stages, there was playgrounds where the smallest children, pre-k, kindergarten, behind the building, and there was doorways out in the classrooms into the back of the building, so the kids would stay away from the road, and also, they would have their own areas, and didn't realize that that had been scrapped, and all that at the school, so that is not part of the school building now. And if you drive by the school, you visit the playground area that's there, to know that it's gonna be used by over 450 students, I just don't think it's large enough. After asking about why it wasn't extended down to the yard more, I was told that it's because there was an access road that, that's going behind the playground, and I didn't understand why we wouldn't be able to just move the access road, because the access road goes nowhere but to the playground, so I don't understand that. I'm hoping that these problems can be resolved before the school opens. Also, later in the day on the 7th, I met with the Harts Volunteer Volunteer Department Chief, Jason Moore, and that's when he gave me the petition that we submitted today. And he was, Jason Moore, his father Edgar Moore, and several others in the Harts area were instrumental in helping get this petition decided. We could have had hundreds more signatures, but they decided, once Greg Luntzer and others said that the Department of Highways have indicated that the current will be moved, that they went ahead, the community, and pulled the petition, and stopped having it circulated. On December the 12th, I traveled to Charleston at 1:00 to the Small Cities Block Grant Meeting at the Cultural Center, and again, the Commission President was in attendance. The purpose was to accept $500,000 of $1.5 million total for the Upper Big Harts project. This project will impact over 200 houses, and it will deliver water to Hudingis Grade School. Hudingis Grade School is not a Lincoln County school, but it is the only school in Logan County that currently does not have public water. And I was interviewed by the WQBD radio after the meeting, and they were asking, does this mean economic development? What do you think this means for the area? And I said, what this means for the area, the people that have lived there for so long and struggle without water, now will have clean, safe drinking water. Economic development's important, but at this point, we just want to make sure that our people stay healthy, and they remain in those areas. At 3:00, I traveled to Huntington for a finance committee meeting with Dwight Coover, who's in the back, and the Southwestern Action Council Board, after the finance meeting, for 30 meeting of the full board, and then a 6:00 Christmas dinner at Logan's, so that was pretty busy, babe. That is all I have.
Okay, I'll try to hurry. One thing we wanna talk about is our goals coming up for the new year, and we all go back and look at what we've accomplished, and what do we wanna do next year, so basically, I got a couple of things I wanna just sort of run through, and then of course, any commission wants to sound off on that too, may do so, but I lost one of my notes. But the biggest thing that I have is basically talking about what have we accomplished far as water. And I pulled out of the goals, had Judy pull them up from last time, I couldn't find my copies, so I got them off the computer, but basically, one of the goals we had last year was to work to help get water for the Upper Big Harts Thompson branch, and as Mr. Rangin indicated, that that's what we were in Charleston this week, getting the startup funding, do the first two or three miles of that, the extra million dollars. And County Commission has put money into this project, $50,000 to do the upfront engineering work. One of the goals too was to work with the Lincoln PSD to get water in the Alcoa, Woodville, Bulger Road, upper Mud River Valley, and we heard a report on that earlier, that that is Lincoln's number one priority for our water projects, major water projects, we're still doing smaller, but I think we're, we'll see in the next three months, that there'll be something moving on that, where I think it's, it's getting right where it needs to be. Also, I was at that. Also, I was at that Charleston meeting. I just always look around, see who I can see to, see if I can find anything out. And the administrator for the Region Three, which is like our Region Two planning development, Region Three covers Boone, Canoa, and Clay Counties, and he was there because Boone County was getting a little bit of money to help on the project going off Quarter G toward Mud River. But I asked him about the Laurel Ford Canyon area, and he said that they thought they had come up with a way to fund that, so they didn't think it was going to qualify for ARC money. But because, but Lincoln County is a distressed county. We do qualify. Boone is not considered distressed. But what they have agreed to, I think, what he talked was to go ahead and award that, put that in the project, and that it was a distressed area, although it was actually in Boone. But I didn't tell him, but I really think that the whole area is Lincoln, because we've had some dispute down through time as to where is the boundary line. And I really think it is Lincoln, but we're going to get that funded. That's going to help us. Laurel Ford is, as you come into Lincoln County, you get into the Lee Bill funeral. Now, we've, the Lower Mud River, we still have that on that, on our goals, and we'll be on there again, I'm sure. But I did talk to Vic Roberts, he's up there too, and I asked him about the projects down the Lower Mud. And he said, well, said, I've got eighty-five percent. He's the engineer with, with the project. And he said, I've got eighty-five percent of design. The problem is, he says, Lincoln PSD hasn't put that as their priority. I said, well, I know they've got the Mud River Valley, Woodville, all that as their priority. So last night, I decided to talk to Ron Gregory, the chairman of the PSD, because I've got this meeting coming up. I need to know. I said, Ron, is there any way possible that we can start working on the Lower Mud River? He said, well, once we are sure that the funding's in place, I will bring it up to Mike and the board and see if we can start the Lower Mud as their very next project. So I hope that we'll, the next six months, we'll be able to figure out something, have something you guys be talking about. Because I think, as I looked at that funding scenario, I think that the pieces will come in play to make this other project go.
Are we committed on that Heart Creek project? Is that our mission as far as Small Cities Block Area Priority Project? I mean, are we eligible for another?
I think soon as they start spending this, we'll be eligible for another. I asked that question to Jimmy Vols, he was up there too, our Region Two guy, and that's what he said. He thinks it'll be ready. And I think Logan is going to ask us, of course, Mike may come too and ask, but I think Logan, he said, they're looking at Francis Creek and all that. He said, we're ready to start looking. So one, another one that's in the Harts area is Marsh Fort Piney. I think they're still working on that, Rick says, and that's going to be a completed project soon. Big Ugly, we do have money to run two miles of line over there. It hasn't been done yet. This is a self-help through the Logan PSD. But it's one of our goals to see that done, the money's there. We just haven't got, got it done yet. But we'll just keep beating the drum to see if we can do it. Projects still out there that we haven't got any really work on yet, was in our goals, was the nine mile, four mile, to get water into nine mile and extend four mile. And we haven't got any movement on that yet. I did stop at the Bransley Mid-Kit PSD Board Meeting this week on the way to Harts, and they were having a meeting. I thought, well, it's convenient. I'll just stop and we'll see what's going on. So also, at that, I was informed or found out that they're, they have, or in the process of putting the project together that will get Ranger Bottom and the East Fork, bottom fourteen mile mountain out there. So that's going to be a project that we, that we were, come in. In our goal, it looks like it's starting to move a little bit on that. Also, Sugar Creek is in our goal. We have not got anything moving on that yet, but Mike's well aware of that. I talked about it. We funded the Route Three project, but that is a project that we'll have to be dealt with.
Thank you.
In our goal is also Man's Knob, and we do have the money in place. The water is mostly up the hill, but that's a project self-help that Logan PSD has agreed to do, and the money's all in place between what the coal company has given us. And Judy keeps telling me, she's getting this ten thousand dollars still yet in to help put that project together. So we, we think we'll have that all right. Francis Creek project will definitely be a priority. And as I said earlier, Logan PSD is already looking at how they're going to fund that. And they basically said, we're going to be approaching you guys to consideration of that. Of course, the ten mile project, I stopped to find out when it's going to Harsh, the crime watch meeting. I thought, well, if they're meeting there, I'm going to find out what's going on, ten mile. So the engineers were there, and all the people that was in place to make this happen were discussing as I walked in the door. And basically, the ten mile project, as I understand it, and Mr. Absher may want to add to it, but December the twenty-second is the day that they're going to be fully authorized to sign all documents and begin construction.
Maybe the twenty-third.
Twenty-third. And their pipe already stacked up up there. They're already ready to do. So I think it, Dr. Banks is worried about that for, I don't know, seven, eight years probably. But all of us been concerned, but that project is definitely, will be finished by this time next year, no doubt. Let's see. Self-help project. We're still putting money in the budget to do that, and Mike's got me a list of about four that he and I will sit down and try to put priorities on and begin in the Lincoln PSD. We did by self-help complete the upper part of Big Creek here, finished that project back in the summer. Just got three houses, but made that project complete. It wasn't our self-help, it's a big cost, it's a great deal. There's other things in the goals that we certainly can make progress on, but in the sake of time, I'm not supposed to do all those. But as you heard earlier, we have been able to get movement on the Hatfield McQuay Trail System, definitely in Ivy Branch. And as Jeff Lusk indicated the other day, I had it at the breakfast, that the Harts can be looked at seriously as soon as the contract is up with, with the, with the Department of Natural Resources, who control most of that Big Ugly hunting area. So it's one of those things that we, we need to be ready when, when the opportunity comes. The things that I seen down, need to be thinking about from everyone is for new goals, reiterate most of what we have here, new goals I had down to talk about, make sure we get in there as the early voting. We're starting to move on that in the last meeting. We need to make sure that, make that a goal. The stuff Christie talked about, election process in general, we need to have that as a goal. That wasn't in there last year. We certainly have moved that and acted on it, and I think we have done a lot of good. As Commissioner Banks mentioned there, cell towers needs to be one of our top goals due to convenience of people, but also the safety issue. A new thing that we did last year, but I shouldn't find in the goals, that doesn't mean it's not in there. But one of the things I want to talk just real quick about is there are healthy issues, there are healthy outlooks. And so, you know, we had this group meeting last year, and each of us took some responsibility to try to make the areas that we work in or around a little more healthy. And so what I want to be able to propose in our new goals and begin something in January, working with Rick and others, to continue here at the courthouse and anyone we can touch, is to do two things, is lose weight and exercise more, and no smoking period. But, but I think what we want to sit down and do is figure out a way that we can encourage and reward people if they want to, you know, everything I read, I picked up our national paper this week that comes to the Association, National Association of Counties, and in, I don't remember the county now, but it was in Oregon, the commissioners out there was talking about, they're an agriculture country, and you'd think that agriculture, for me, first I think of beans, corn, and all that. Well, it's beef out, well, he was in his area. He said, and people just now should eat too much of it. And so they were doing the same type of thing. They were wanting to put in, and they had really, one of the commissioners, the lady, was way overweight, and she was doing a lot of the talking in, in the interview, but basically saying, with the weight issue, and Dr. Banks is no better than any of us, but the weight issues contribute to many other issues, whether it be diabetes or whatever. And so I guess in the goal that we put forth, what I'd like SIS to do is figure out a game plan where that we can be weight conscious. If we, you know, that's an issue, but healthy dieting, healthy, healthy type of eating. Even if you don't want to lose any weight, but you, you know, that, but what I have in mind is, let's set goals either by elected officials, departments, court clerk, county clerk, whatever, or maybe the whole courthouse. But us to have a goal, let's lose so many pounds. And if you do that, then we have so many type of reward type of things. People work there for rewards, I think. And so we might, we want to do that, and with the walking also. Again, work with the primary care in this area, maybe in Harts, the community center, but give them people an opportunity to walk and, and same time, maybe have a goal to so many miles in so many months. Something to, so you have a place that you know you've reached a mile somewhere. So just keep that in mind as we put our goals together. And let's see if I can read. Oh, and the other we need to add in there for the new year at least is the, what we have, and we, back here, we've got our people who helped get this done again. But the Guy and Dog River has been declared for study for National Scening by River. So one of the goals we need to do is put some statement in there, how we're going to work with that and make, you know, assist to bring it about, to make it work better, particularly in the Lincoln County section. So clean it up probably will be one of them, but that's just ideas for the next time. All right. Just whatever happened, I'm not one of those, we can't miss any more meetings because having only one meeting seemed like I had too many things to do in between. So behind the scenes for mine was, November twenty-eighth, I attended a farm land protection meeting. And of course, Rick is a representative on that. It does seem to me that we're getting closer to being able to protect at least a farm. We're learning more about how to do it, but we have two people who are highly interested in having their farm set aside, at least considering to set aside as a protected farm forever. And also, we, some issues came up about insurance protection for liability exposure, board members. So Jim Stevens, I think, has something figured out on that. December the fifth, you heard Mr. Ramey talk about, we did attend a meeting with the superintendent, talk about the schools in Harts. And I think that once the kids break for Christmas, they will not be going back to their other schools. They're all going to go to the new schools. So she basically informed us that we were concerned, well, our building's going to be left, you know, to be vandalized or whatever. And she assured us that, no, they already had a plan in place, that once they move out, that they're going to secure the buildings, change the lock codes or whatever. So, and set on for at least a month to see if there's things that maybe they need in the way of equipment or supplies, whatever, or maybe some other school needs. And at the same time, as we discussed, you may want to make sure you've got enough space up there before you give any of it away to somebody else. And the other thing we reiterated, we kept talking about, we need to come up with a way to jointly make use of that gymnasium up there for that community. And I think that everything can be worked out with that in due time, because she has, basically, the school board wants to maintain the field, maintain the dressing rooms and locker for use there, but not just that, but make it a then as priority, and then others scheduled time, but anyway, after the community, if we work all this out. But anyway, we had a good meeting up there, and I think we're to the point where we'll, she will go with her board and see how things go. December the seventh, we did travel to Harts to go as heers for the EDA, and there was lots of people in attendance from the Harts community, that several people came to the meeting, I think, just to find out about what it'd be putting in cabins or whatever. I know the EDA chairman's here, Mr. Coburn, he was there, and a board member, Faris Burton, was there, Kenya Advocates from our Hatfield McQuay. So I'll move on down to that. Jason Moore, who seems to be a very concerned person in the community there, fire chief, always looking for things to help that community, help his fire department. One of the things he mentioned to me was, in the fire, in the levy that we passed this recently, the part that, that there was money set aside, I think twenty thousand dollars, to maintain the tower, radio towers throughout our county. And he wanted me to check into that, and I did call Francis Holden, dot nine one, and ask him to put that on Alan's desk and let me know where we're at on that, if we're using that money, where it's been spent, whatever. So it just helps sometimes that people tell you what, what you need to be doing. Leaving at me, I started to come back to a meeting at one o'clock to meet with Rick and Ryan, talk about some of the issues that are facing them. We heard this morning about the concrete tanks leaking and things. And I just can't get over Rick wanting, he's putting his head down in there and taking pictures. But that may be the only way. December the eighth, we had our Route Ten meeting in Cabo County at the commission office. I was able to attend that and chair that meeting. And basically, we submitted three plans for next year, one for Capitol, Lincoln, and Logan. Basically, what we're focusing on right now, and we've got one or two to be finished yet, but they are going to be the curve at, at Harts, Tony Curve, that is definitely going to be scraped out with at least more visibility. And we've still got one other project in Salt Rock. Those are being worked out. But for next year, we have come up with a project to provide, maybe we'll call them pullover lanes or passing lanes or whatever on the mountains. And so we're at Davis Creek Mountain in Cabo County. We basically said, it's Department of Highways, here's what we'd like. Now, you do the study and see if it's possible and all that, but this is our priority. And Lincoln County, it's the fourteen mile mountain for passing. And also, we really sneaked in two for Lincoln. At Bransley, if you look at the Bransley Bridge on both sides of it, there's a highway, people actually own a wide piece of property, and they've got a lot of it already paved. So what we suggested to them there was, how much money can be spent? Why don't you look at that piece of highway and see if there's ways that you could direct traffic better. But we do have several wrecks on that bridge. And so we're asking to look at that too, without spending very much money, maybe by changing lanes or something. But, and then at Logan County, the representative, Art Kurgendolfer, he thought we should look at the, where the Logan Country Club is. It's a curve, you cross a railroad, and there's been lots of accidents there. So he's asking, see if we could put a turning lane or something into that piece of property there going into that country club. The good part that happened during this, December the tenth, I was able to attend the Christmas dinner at LCOC and got fed and all that. So I enjoyed that part. At that meeting though, we didn't, we just got to do everything you can do, but we did have a lot of our legislators there. And you certainly don't ever miss a chance to talk to them about what's needed in the county. So we take advantage of it when you can. December the twelfth was the day that we talked about getting a Small Cities Block Grant, traveled to Charleston. Kept moving the time in the meeting. First, it was in the governor's reception, and got up there and they said, no, it's over at the Cultural Center. So then somebody said, well, it's at one thirty. Somebody was wrong, Greg. And got the call in, and it was actually one o'clock. So, but I always go early, so I, you know, like I said, go see people and talk to them. So that day, I did go down and talk to Joe Vaughn about our precincts and what could be done there. And also, we had a certificate made, I think we had Sean helping us, and I went over to the Department of Highways building where the engineer has helped us all these safety projects, and gave him a certificate thanking you for working with us the last couple, three years, and, and look forward to working this next year. So just try to do those kind of things when you're out there moving the vows. So it was enjoyable, especially when you bring money back home. The other thing we did was talk about the midkit thing. We did stop there on the way, coming from Charleston, I'm awaited to Harsh for the crime watch meeting dinner. And so I was able to do that and stop there at, at the midkit. But I couldn't get my wife and grandchild coming with me. They did go with me to Harsh, but they stayed out in the vehicle and wouldn't go in there. It's, I think it's very huge. But, you know, if you haven't been to the PSD office at midkit, you should. But, you know, if you haven't been to the PSD office at Midkip, you should stop sometime. Especially if you're ever at the old. I tell you, they've done some hard work there, and they've got the nice setup that building they had purchased there. So the next item was December the 13th. I was able to participate in a nine o'clock, I guess, a conference call with Mason County, Jeff Lusk, as a board member, Wayne County, and Cabo County. I think that's all ones to come, and Wayne County showed, the one guy had finally called in. But we were actually basically approving a resolution, had to be approved, assigned, to say, "Here's what we are doing in Region Two far as transportation." And it was good to hear, listen to Michelle Craig, talk about these are the things going on in transportation and in this region. And most, I guess, the one that was a highlight just for this year was Tribe River Transit. And the figures she had, showing more growth, and she's used that as an example of something good has happened. And of course, the guy, Mason County, Bob Baird, he said, he had heard about it, and Mason County doesn't have a taxi or any type of transportation other than senior services. He said, and I won't go into that, but he just said that we used to have something like Tribe River Fire. Of course, I used it, I said, "This happened here." I said, "Well, Bob, I heard you complaining the other day that you had gotten a different representative in Congress." I said, "'Cause they just got our man over there, Ray Hall." I said, "He's transportation man, here'd be your chance. Why don't you hook up with him, and start supporting him, and maybe he'll help to get you something over there." Well, Bob's a serious Republican. But he's a superman, good man. We did have our meeting of December 14th, yesterday, at Tribe River Transit, and talked about some of the things that go on down there. And basically, you just can't stand up about Tribe Rivers, you're doing a good job. And I think that's all I got to say about F, right?
I was going to make one statement, ask the commission that if we get these awards like the Small Cities Block, the commission, but we never get them, I would tend to reward itself. Because it's, as I said on the Route 37 project, it's hard to ask people for money and not say thank you. And that's really the reason I would want to know, to be able to say, you know, we really appreciate.